You know, Christine Erickson said every time they have a debate before they have this thing, she says, you know, when you came to Emmy, I thought she right on, she nailed it, she was, she was right. I'm gonna bring it up at some point. If you're waiting for it, I don't think she's called.
It's four o'clock, we will call the meeting to order, please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'm sorry, we started a minute late, I'm not Kate Parker, president of the school board, she is out of town on business, so because the B team is running it, we started late, I apologize. No person's wishing to address the board, Vicki, thank you, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the February 7th and February 22nd meetings, please?
移到
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries, thank you, I have a motion for approval of the agenda, please.
移到
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries, thank you, no conflicts of interest to report today, and a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
移到
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries, thank you, and on to the reports of the president.
Vice President Alberti and school board members, I'm happy to present to you today some results and projections of the Bill Dakota Scholarship. Just to give you a little bit of background of the management of this scholarship at Southeast Tech, it was, used to be split between the admissions department and the foundation. The foundation's primary role with Bill Dakota has been to facilitate industry partnerships in engaging regional and local companies in sponsoring students through Bill Dakota. With our search for a new admissions director, Bill Dakota transferred completely over to the foundation in the interim until we could get our new admissions director up to speed and through all of the wonderful changes that we've made in our admissions department. We've developed a management team for Bill Dakota so that we can take a multifaceted approach and making sure that the right student is getting the Bill Dakota Scholarship and that we're monitoring their success to ensure that they complete the program successfully and that we are helping that student to adhere to all of the requirements of Bill Dakota. So it is, again, transforming to be now a joint effort between the foundation, admissions, and student success to follow that student all the way through that Bill Dakota Scholarship, as well as working with the Sioux Falls School District and CTE in helping to recruit and educate students about Bill Dakota. So I want to share with you the results of where we've been and where we have the potential to go this year. So one of this, and I apologize that the information on the screen is going to be a little bit small, but the important number to identify is that 17.6%. Since the inception of Bill Dakota, these are the programs in which Bill Dakota has supported, and our enrollment in these programs because of the Bill Dakota Scholarship has grown by 17.6%. So it has had a very positive impact on these high need work areas. This diagram here shows you the difference between what we awarded in diploma versus AAS degrees. So we're doing a pretty good split between the two in awards, and this diagram outlines where we've come in the Bill Dakota Sponsor Scholar Program. So our Sponsor Scholar Program is where we work directly with industry to connect them to a Bill Dakota student. The first year, while that number says zero, that number is a little bit deceiving, because we approached sponsorship in a different way than the other schools. Rather than leveraging the scholarship initially in the first year, what we did was we sought money for students that didn't have the ability to get a Bill Dakota Scholarship. So we started a new cohort of LPNs with Stanford Hospital for $80,000, and then we helped students already in the program that weren't eligible for Bill Dakota to receive sponsors. So while our first year numbers reflect zero, because it wasn't a direct benefit with Bill Dakota, we were actually generating a lot of student support with our Sponsor Scholar model, just not in a way that the Bill Dakota Board recognized, because it wasn't a 50-50 split. So in the next second and third cohort, you see where we have grown our industry partnerships, where companies are directly benefiting from that Bill Dakota Scholarship and leveraging those funds. This is another way to look at the growth that we've had in our Sponsor Scholar Program, specifically to partnering with Bill Dakota. This is a comparison of us with the other technical schools, and the one thing that I want to note on this slide that I think is a point of pride for what we've done in our Sponsor Scholar Program is drawing attention to the numbers of Mitchell Tech specifically, you know, they had eight, eight and 15. But what this slide doesn't tell you is that Mitchell Tech has been working in workforce recruitment for a very long time, a long time prior to the onboard of Bill Dakota. They had a relationship with Midco for their Satcom Telecom, they've had a longstanding relationship with Youth Electric in funneling workforce to them, as well as Trail King. So they have been working in this environment of contractually committing students to companies for much longer than Southeast Tech has. Southeast Tech didn't even get into that environment really until the scholarship came onboard. So for us to surpass their numbers in two years' time, when they have a longer history, as well as Lake Area Tech have a longer history than us, is a, is a big point of pride in that we were able to ramp up and garner support. And I think it's because of the quality of students that we produce from Southeast Tech that it's easy for companies to want to partner with us, because they know the quality of candidate that they're going to get. So we've experienced wonderful growth, and I have no doubt that our growth potential is more as we continue on through the program. So as it stands today, we are in the process of Cohort Four for Bill Dakota. So the application opened up January 1st, and it closes March 31st. The way that we recruit industry through our Sponsor Scholar Program is a little bit different than the way that some of the other schools do it. We do it through a match event, where we invite companies to come and meet with students, kind of like a job fair format. Companies have the opportunity to interview those students right on the spot, and then they can take them in the second, third round interviews after our match event. So rather than working with companies and individuals on a one-on-one match base, we do it in a mass production kind of way, and then we work one-on-one in relationship after we've made that initial mass introduction. So what you're seeing here are 19 commitments already. So we had, we had our Bill Dakota Match Event, we actually had two, we had one on Thursday, February 22nd, and then the next, following week on the 27th. The 22nd was pretty much the majority of the industries, and the 27th was the IT programs that met with companies. A number of students have also been active in getting their own sponsor, because if we, as we've been out across the state to educate the community about Bill Dakota, how you get a Bill Dakota, we really stressed the sponsorship piece. So many of the students have actually actively engaged in pursuing their own companies to decide where they would like to be sponsored. So a number of these ones that you'll see up there, Prairie Suns, Auto Land, Sorlene Electric, Summit Contracting, Mitchell Electric, all of those are students that actually went out and got their own sponsor on their own merit and did theirs, those interviews and brought that sponsor to us. Another thing that we're doing that's a little bit innovative and different than from the other technical schools, is we've actually partnered with Flandrew Sioux Indian Tribe. So Flandrew Sioux Indian Tribe is actually sponsoring one of their own members to come to Southeast Tech. There is no backend work commitment for that student, so they don't have to go back to the Flandrew community to work, it's basically helping to bring their tribal members into education. So it's an exciting and new model for us that we hope to grow and replicate. So as it stands today, we have 19 confirmed commitments in Sponsor Scholar already, with several weeks to go yet. Last year we were at 23, so we're on a really good pace as far as commitments today. But because of that match event, we have the potential for much more. So all of the companies that were there have not necessarily picked a student that they're going to match with. Our here-in cohort presents a whole new opportunity of students under Bill Dakota Two, with the expansion of the RN program being part of the Bill Dakota umbrella. So you'll see here, we have pending commitments of about 55 more. So if all of these commitments come in as planned or projected, we will be at 74 Bill Dakota Scholarship Sponsor Scholar commitments this year. This is triple R numbers from last year. So the program has spread, the word is getting out there, and people are really benefiting greatly and wanting to invest in this program. And it's all being done from a one-person office with a strong support from admissions. Admissions really got involved this year in helping to get those students to not only apply for Bill Dakota, but get them to the match event, making active phone calls. So we've really beefed up our efforts to recruit students into the Bill Dakota Scholarship and then recruit them into those match settings. So it's been a strong combination of those two things that's going to lead this, to this dramatic increase that we'll have in our Sponsor Scholar Program. Just to kind of go over a little bit about how the awards have come in over time. So on average, this is a comparison, Cohort One, we did about 70 awards, and we've maintained that number throughout all of the years. So Cohort Two was about 69 total awards, and then in Cohort Three, we were again at about 70 total awards. So we anticipate then that in Cohort Four, we're going to be well above that with the number of industry partnerships that we've had. Now, one thing that you might notice is although we have increased the number of industry partnerships the last two years, why hasn't our number of overall Bill Dakota awards increased? Well, that's a numbers game. It depends on what students that you're scholarshiping in one program, because some programs are more expensive than others. So it's the ratio of how many students you're placing with Bill Dakota in more of the expensive programs to more of the least programs. The more you have in the least expensive programs or our one-year programs, the higher your actual physical number will be. But we weren't looking for numbers, we're looking for quality of placement that's going to benefit the student in the school. So we're looking to strategically place students under Bill Dakota in programs where we need to increase our numbers, where there's industry demand, where industry's telling us they need those students, and then making sure that it's a good fit for the student. Is that student a good applicant for Bill Dakota, and should they receive the award? So while it doesn't seem like our numbers have grown, it's just, it's because of the ratio when you start to look at expensive programs or more expensive program versus cheaper programs. So we like to be more on the quality and making sure that we're placing them in the right program, rather than trying to hit a target number of number of students in, that we get in Bill Dakota. The other benefit that we have over our competitor schools is that we have a unique relationship with Ford Sioux Falls, in that they provide a grant to small businesses to help them play in this game. $8,000 is a lot of money to invest in one student. And for some of the larger corporations in Sioux Falls, that's an easier commitment. For a smaller mom-and-pop shop to make that big investment in a student is a harder decision. This makes that decision easier for them by giving them a $2,500 grant so that they can reduce their cost, and now they're investing less but still getting that same benefit as a larger competitor of theirs. This is just an overview of the programs that are under Bill Dakota, and I'm sure you've seen this before, the addition this year is the RN program to that group, and the deadline again is at the end of March. This is a little picture of our Bill Dakota Match Event that we had, we had a wonderful story, I have the link, but I won't play the story, but if you go on Kellaland.com, you can see my interview and an overview of this event, you'll hear from a student, an employer, about how meaningful this scholarship has been. These are a couple more pictures of students that you can see. On this day, we had 10 students that were committed by the end of the day from this event, so it was extremely powerful. Sanford and Navara came out very strong and aggressive at this event in recruiting surgical technology students, and it made our surgical, surgical technology students that attended very, very happy. So it was a strong event, well-attended, we have over 150 students that came to this event and 18 employers. So it was definitely an active, active engagement. To talk a little bit about how the rest of our scholarships have been outside of the Bill Dakota Scholarship, and to talk about the foundation scholarships as a whole, we've made a big transformation in our scholarship program at Southeast Tech over the last couple of years. We went from a completely manual process to an automated process, where we have an online software that helps to match students. It was not configured correctly in a way that would make it easier on the backend management. So we actually, this summer, had to reconfigure that entire software like it was a new piece of software. So it was a big undertaking, but I think the benefit will be great in the fact that we have 262 scholarships that have been applied for, and almost every student that has applied for a scholarship this year will receive a scholarship from the foundation. So the other major thing that we did in the foundation is that we better aligned ourselves with the plans of admissions. So you've heard a lot about the work that admissions have done to speed up the process, to move up the process, and we are working directly with admissions to put ourselves in the funnel so that students can make a decision to come to Southeast Tech quicker and sooner in that model. Before, we were not finalizing awards until May. So we moved it up quite a bit last year, before that, we weren't finalizing awards till June or July. So last year, we made a big move in moving those further up in the funnel. This year, we will have all scholarship awarded by the end of this week, and students will know well in advance of graduation that they're going to receive a scholarship for Southeast Tech. We hope that this move will help students make the decision to come to Southeast Tech and move them to register for our AAR sessions and, and help that admissions process. So it's an exciting move in transition. You'll see that our scholarships are down a little bit from last year in the number of we're going to award, but as you've heard and you've known, the foundation has taken under quite a few big initiatives this year. So in light of that, the scholarships will dip slightly for one year, until we get back on track with reaching our goals by the end of the year. Any questions?
Any questions for Shelley?
I'm just going to make a comment, I think what an awesome thing for students to go out and secure their own sponsor. I think as an employer, I would be very impressed with that, to have a student who has the skills and the confidence to go and approach somebody and say, here's what I want to do, can you help me to do that? And to have that conversation and, and to actually get someone to commit. So I think that's awesome for the student, but it's even, it's better for Southeast as well, because now you can still continue to do your programming, but knowing that you have all these other kind of fingers in these different communities that are reaching out and making new connections, and maybe in the future, those companies will come to you to say, how can we help? We really enjoyed this employee that we have now, based on that conversation we had when they came, approached us, how can we get more people like that? So I think the outreach of that is awesome and a good testament to the work that you guys are doing, and not feeling like something that just this little office owns, but that you're kind of sharing the love and, and getting everybody excited about that and the opportunities. So I think that was a really cool part of the report that you gave, so thank you.
Yeah, we've, we've really empowered students through the Bill Dakota Roadshow Tour to engage companies in their own sponsorship, to look to their own resources in their own community and how they can leverage those. One student that I can think of specifically, she's from rural South Dakota, she's from Gregory, she does not want to leave Gregory, she does not want to relocate to Sioux Falls, she'll come here to school, but she wants to go back home. So she contacted every hospital within her region and set up interviews with every hospital. She has multiple offers she's considering in which Bill Dakota Scholarship person that she's going to take on. That's just one story of, of multiple that we've had from students, where they're bringing the company to us, and then now that company is forming a relationship with us, and they're getting more students because of that one student that brought them to us.
The trail leader, yeah, very cool.
Yeah, it's, it's been a fun experience this year.
Any other questions? Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to acknowledge the Bill Dakota Scholarship update?
移到
Second.
Discussion?
Good work.
Yeah. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries, thank you. Lon Hurd.
Vice President Alberti, members of the board, Lon Hurd, Director of Industry Relations at Southeast Tech, and here to talk to you today about a couple of apprenticeship-related initiatives that we've taken on this year. The first of these is dental assisting apprenticeship that we are in the process of developing. This is a program that we've had previously on campus, we ran this approximately 2006 through 2011. The program was suspended at that time, basically due to the economic times. We had all just lived through the 2008 and beyond recession, and that hit the dental industry the same way it did all the others. And so we did suspend that at the time, but as of last summer, we had several very productive meetings with a group of regional dentists, and they, they made it very clear that they're simply not able to bring the people into their offices in the assisting position that they need to. This program does exist at Lake Area Tech, and their message to us is that they simply don't come to Sioux Falls. They're in very small numbers, some Sioux Falls students go up there, some of them come back home, some don't, but there, there simply are not enough. Anecdotally, Neighborhood Dental has been a very active partner in this, they have nine offices in the immediate region, and they have said, we'll put one in every office. So essentially, we have a built-in cohort right there. We've been very active over the time, we are in the process of developing that curriculum. We are working with the State Office of Apprenticeships to get this as a registered apprenticeship, which I'm expecting final paperwork just about any day now, and frankly, we're moving forward with or without them, we're, we're going to do this anyway, because it's a need in the, the area. So students coming into this will be trained in both standard and expanded functions for dental assisting. That expanded function role is very important to the dentists, they have told us in so many words that if we don't have that, don't bother, it's not worth it. They, they have to have that expanded function, so plan on doing that. There's one additional component that we are working through yet, and that is the administration of nitrous oxide. There are some complications to that that we're working through, I think we'll be able to get that done, it will be a very good addition to the program, but it does complicate things. The upside of that is it is additional, another additional credential to the individual student, once they get through that training and, and go through the assessment process. A good piece of news on this is that we are already getting calls. I had an extended conversation this morning with a young lady that knew about the program, wanted to know the registration details, I've been working with Megan on how we're setting that up, it's a little bit different animal than our normal registration process, but we're working through those issues now and hopefully have that set up in the next week or so. So I'm, I'm very optimistic about it, when we ran it before, we had probably an average of 14 people per cohort, we restricted it to 16, simply because of class size and the availability of, of clinical space and things like that, I think we'll be able to go bigger this time. So we're talking probably 24 in a cohort this time. So I expect it to, to do well, I expect the response to be pretty significant, we'll have to see how much it makes the phone ring when we launch it. So I'm very excited, I think it'll be a good program, I think it's something that has tremendous growth potential for Southeast Tech. The second program I'd like to talk to you about is a construction pre-apprenticeship. This is a conversation that grew directly out of the sector breakfast that we've had through the fall months. We've had some really good interaction with both the Home Builders Association and the AGC. This effort is primarily involving the AGC, the, the home builders were involved early on, but have, have decided to take another direction. But we're moving forward with this, this will be an opportunity for high schoolers at 16 years of age and up, and it'll be a 10-week program that will start in June this summer, go through the summer months. Students will get classroom, laboratory, and on-the-job experience through this. The concept here is to deliver basic construction skills, both residential and commercial, so that as students go through this, they would then qualify to move into possibly a full-registered apprenticeship. Both the home builders and the AGC locally have those opportunities. We're also building five college credits into this, and we're working on that transferability into those programs that, that would qualify at Southeast Tech, whether that would be construction management, several other construction-related programs. So we're excited about the development of this, we see it as a very good potential feeder, both for, again, those apprenticeships that I mentioned, or possibly some of Southeast Tech's own programs. We're also excited about the possibilities for our industry partners, as it being a way of increasing awareness and interest in the, the construction industry in general. So we're excited to see how this first year goes, we've had very good feedback, Vice President Jacobson has talked with the Harrisburg School District at Times on this, and their comments is, we want you to do it again just for us. So we think the response is going to be very positive, it's another program that we're excited about launching, so I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
I see the construction one, they'll actually be paid during that timeframe as well?
That's correct, yes.
Do, what do they have to, what's their tuition for, is there a tuition for participating?
There is, where the tuition is being done at the dual-credit rate, so it's very affordable, and the AGC has stepped in and is paying for that. So it's, from the standpoint of the employer, it's just the hourly for the, the student coming in. Now, they have agreed that they will pay both for the OJT time, when they're actually on the job working, and the classroom time.
Perfect.
Which makes it much more enticing to the students, so again, I'm hoping that the response is very positive.
And I saw the tuition for the nursing being paid typically by the sponsoring dental practice, do they also get paid during their timeframe too?
Yes, they, they will, and by the nature of a registered apprenticeship, that has to be paid. That particular group will not be paid while they're in class.
Okay.
But that class is one night a week over a nine-month period, and so it has less of an impact, but they are, they are full-time employees. The scale on that is that during the first half of that time, they'll be paid 80% of the normal starting wage, as they get to that midpoint, they will move to 90% of the starting wage.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Lon on the program? Thank you, sir.
Thank you to the board.
Thank you to the board.
May I have a motion to acknowledge the apprenticeship update?
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Thank you for all your work on that.
It's these kinds of innovations that the community is looking for. We all know that workforce conversations have been taking place at the sector breakfasts before that, at the Development Foundation, the Chamber, in the community in many, many ways for seven or eight years. And this is the kind of innovation that is going to really help get traction with developing more workforce, more opportunities, and I'm just very pleased to see it. So thank you. Any other comments? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Vice President Alberti and board members. Just a couple of quick announcements. One, I wanted to mention again, I think I forwarded this to you already, but on Tuesday, March 27th, the State Board of Technical Education will be meeting at Southwest, or Southwest, Southeast Tech. And it's exciting for us to provide that opportunity to host the State Board. But what we're going to do on the morning of the 27th is provide an opportunity of breakfast social. So we'll have some of our student leadership to have an opportunity to meet with the State Technical Board members, but we'd like to invite you all out to that as well. So it'll be from about 8:15 to about 8:45, and then the regular meeting of the State Board will start at 9:00 a.m. So that's a nice event to look forward to. And just a couple of quick thank yous. I think I always kind of like to wrap up these meetings with thank yous because there's a lot of people that are here that are working hard, but also back on campus. And as an example, today, we had Anna Fisher from our admissions office really did an outstanding job hosting what is, I think it's the 14th Annual Women in Science Program, where we hosted at Southeast Tech today. It was close to 750 middle-school girls to introduce them to STEM careers and programs. And it's really something I think we're really proud to be part of. And just walking around in those buildings, they pretty much took over the Mickelson Building on both levels, and then also in the Health Science Building. And it's just exciting to see that kind of activity. And that doesn't happen without a lot of hard work on, again, the admissions office. So thanks to all of their staff and everybody else that contributed to that. And then, again, thank you to the efforts of the team. Shelley spoke about much of the foundation work that's going on, and she's done a tremendous job in terms of organizing and helping facilitate the sector breakfast conversations that have led to more discussions and several, or at least a couple of those, you know, Lon mentioned today, the pre-construction apprenticeship opportunity. What's impressed me is we have had, on Monday mornings throughout the winter, I think we've had eight or nine different meetings, but 10, 11 contractors from the Sioux Falls region coming in at 7:30 on Monday morning, cold weather and all, and coming in and helping us to develop that program with the curriculum, the foundation of it, and then bringing it forward. So it's really nice to see the community and industry stepping up and helping us in terms of hopefully making a dent in the workforce here. So some nice, positive things to be mentioning here again. So thank you to all of you again for the good work that's been going on. Thanks.
Thank you, President Griggs. Any other business to come before the board? If not, may I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
We're adjourned. Thank you all.
I think we better keep the name Southeast Tech, too.